This boy and girl are going to be well equipped when the time comes to take their places as worthy members of adult society.
Hello, how y'all? This is Daniel Isman, the host of the Breaking Normal Podcast, where my guests are all invited based on the frequency of synchronicity, all done in person, and all trailblazers in the breaking of all things normal. Welcome back to the Breaking Normal Podcast. It's been, we've been doing about two to three a week lately, thanks to Yovel here at the Let's Do Podcast studio. And once again, he's brought in another special guest that I am meeting for the first time, Rob Kaplan.
Yes.
Welcome to the Breaking Normal Podcast.
Thank you. Great to be here.
What do you know about what you're getting into here?
Probably just enough to be dangerous.
Well, if I understand, you might have lived somewhat of a dangerous life potentially based on your career as a fire captain. Is that correct? Is that?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I could start from my dangerous life where I grew up.
Let's do that. Let's get to know Rob from like, um, chapter one danger to chapter now.
Chapter, it was chapter four. Um, yeah, I grew up in Gary, Indiana, which, um, it was either five or seven years. I can't remember. It was the murder capital per capita in the United States. Um, I watched it do a significant change. There was white flight. We had, um, in the seventies, white mayor went to an African American mayor. A lot of, um, white people moved out. My family did not. We stayed. Um, and I'm very happy we stayed. Um, that's where I think that I really learned how to create relationships with all kinds of diverse people, cultures, communities. Part of it was survival, so I wouldn't get my ass kicked every day, how to talk to somebody and how to diffuse a situation. But it definitely gave me, um, some really good verbal judo and really how to connect with people. And I guess the most significant, uh, thing leading up to where I am now is, um, when I started buying Sheriff sales in Gary, Indiana. I was paying a speeding ticket at the Lake County courthouse and I noticed there were some signs up on the wall. And they were for homes that were close to Lake Michigan. So Gary is, it's a steel town. And they automated, let me back up a second. They automated some of the big machinery, like the 86 inch strip mill that takes a slab of steel that's about this thick, turns it into the coils that we don't see here. But in the Midwest, you see them on the backs of trucks.
Okay.
When that was automated, there was huge layoffs and it was very, very blue collar. And they didn't have, um, they, the people that were laid off, didn't have the skills to immediately find another job nor to relocate. So that's where the whole crime rate, poverty. And that's where the decline started to happen in Gary. So I was paying a speeding ticket. There was a sign and it was a house that was maybe just a block from the beach, Lake Michigan again. And, uh, I inquired about it. They told me it was a foreclosure. It was, I mean, at the time it was like $20,000, which the house was probably worth maybe $70,000 at that time. I wound up buying it. And when I went to the sale, a young girl came up to me and asked me, are you buying my daddy's house? And I wanted to say yes, but nobody has to leave. Everybody can stay there as long as they want. For, you know, the rest of your life, if you want, but I just said yes, and she walked away. So I bought the house. I went to the residence. I knocked on the door. Gentleman answered. And I said, hi, my name's Rob Kaplan. I just bought your house. I have no intentions of kicking you out. You can stay here as long as you want. This is my cost that I have to cover. And it was like literally $300 and well below market rate. And I said, you stay here as long as you want. And what was happening is he was paying his mortgage. He was giving it to his girlfriend who had a coke problem. So it all went up her nose. He didn't realize it. Um, so he was, he, you know, eyeballed me up and down. He said, I suppose you'd like to see the house. And I said, that would be great. And he invited me in. And there was an old television set that was huge and on top of it was the largest handgun I've ever seen in my life. And I thought, well, this sucks. This is how I'm going to die. Buying my first house and trying to keep somebody in the community in their house. But long story short, he showed me the whole house. He's told me the story. We actually became friends. He lived there for 18 months, uh, kept it up. We stayed in contact with him. I kept it up. And then I did three or two other homes, three total like that, where people either stayed for six months, a year, or 18 months. And so that was my first foray into real estate. And on a side, I also bought a house that was literally used as a crack house, but was kind of close to the beach. They, the tenants were out of there, but I gutted it down to the studs and redid that for myself. So it was, yeah, it was an interesting, it was an interesting upbringing, a lot of pollution as well. That's one of the reasons why I moved to Boulder. Rough economy, uh, lot of pollution, a lot of crime. And honestly, no place to send your kids to school unless you wanted to do private school. So, um, I moved out here in 1993 and, uh, looking for a, a healthy lifestyle. I love the 300 plus days of sunshine. I was getting into biking because my real estate, uh, agent, her boyfriend owned Morgul Bismarck Bike Shop, which was a famous bike shop up on the hill. It's no longer there, but it was owned by, um, people that, you know, had won stages in the Tour de France, done grand tours, like Ron Kiefer, Davis Finney were two of the owners. So that's how I got into the biking community as well, just from my Realtor saying, you need a part-time job? Here you go. I was literally like, I don't know that much about bikes. She's like, don't worry, they'll teach you. Yeah.
How old were you when you bought that first house?
I think I was 26.
Okay. So you stayed all the way until, and then what age were you when you moved to Boulder?
Twenty-seven, 28.
So what put Boulder into the maps? How did you know to come here?
I really didn't. I picked three places. I picked Boulder, uh, Flagstaff, Arizona.
Good choice.
And Santa Fe. I went to Flagstaff, or I'm sorry, it wasn't, um, yeah, it was Flagstaff. I went to Flagstaff. It was a little too small for me. Focused on mostly college. Um, it was even a little more crunchy granola than Boulder at the time. I just needed a little bit more culture. And then my next visit was Boulder. It was in March. It was where the New York deli used to be, um, on Pearl Street.
Okay.
Hoppa took it over after that. And I was sitting there, it was blowing snow sideways in Chicago and I was talking to my Realtor and I was literally sitting in a short sleeve t-shirt. And sunshine smelling the pines. And I'm like, I'm done. Let's do this. Let's, let's find a place to live.
Wow.
And, uh, being from the Midwest, I thought if you move to Chicago, you have to move to the mountains. So I moved straight to Netherlands.
Oh, wow.
Which was a whole nother experience with wind commute, completely different climate. But, uh, I started riding my bike to and from Boulder for work.
From Ned?
From Ned. Yeah.
Through the canyon?
Yeah, I'd go down in the morning. Yeah.
You wouldn't go up the canyon?
And I'd go up in the canyon. It sounds terrible, but after standing on concrete, selling bikes all day, getting on a bike and pedaling feels really good.
Got to walk the talk after being in the shop all day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And all my friends were like, they were really accomplished cyclists and a lot of them were professionals. So I wanted to go on a casual ride with them. I had to be in pretty good cycling shape.
And then what about your family? Did you have family in Gary when you left for Boulder or?
Yeah. So another reason why I left Gary is my parents moved to the beach, um, area of Gary in 1964. I was born Christmas Eve of 1964. So they built it and basically I was born into that house. But before then, um, my parents lived in downtown Gary and my brother and sister lived with them. I was a little tangential, a love child. Um, I have the, I don't know why she gave it to me, but my mom gave me the key fob to the Knickerbocker Hotel in Chicago where she and my dad went for a weekend. And lo and behold, surprise, here I am. So my brother was 18 when I was born, my sister 13. Yeah. No, I'm not kidding. I was a love child.
How old were your parents then when they had you?
Like 40 and 42.
Okay. All right.
Or maybe, yeah, there's a five years difference, but right around in there. But all this to say, where they lived earlier was before EPA really, um, cracked down on some of the pollution from the steel mills. And every morning my mom said that they would walk out on the picnic table and brush off the stardust, which is just, you know, toxic, uh, stardust from the steel mills. So my family, my dad passed away from pancreatic cancer. My mom passed away from ovarian cancer. My sister passed away from breast cancer. Everybody in their neighborhood, I would hear them talking about people like, just I'm making up a name, the Johnsons, the Smiths, the whoever. Somebody's got cancer. Somebody's got cancer. Somebody's got cancer. So no, I don't have a lot of relatives left there. They've all either left or they've passed away because my cousins could have been like my uncles.
Yeah. Okay. Wow. And then you have family here in Boulder now or?
No.
Okay.
I mean, my son.
Your son?
Yeah. I have a 20-year-old son.
Oh, cool.
Goes to CU.
Oh, nice.
But no other relatives.
Okay. And so am I understanding you're about to run for mayor?
Uh, city council for a seat in city council. Yeah.
All right. Yeah. Yovel was definitely excited to connect us. I just wanted to now, like, cause this is our first time meeting. So that gives me a little more background. And you've been working at the Jamestown Fire Station? Is that?
No, no. Um, Boulder Rural Fire Station, which is 63rd and diagonal.
Okay, yeah.
It's literally right next door to City Station Six.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you've been doing that for how long?
Um, I did that for 18 years.
Okay.
I retired, well, it'll be three years coming up, retired as a captain, started out as a volunteer because the Jamestown piece is I was in a band. I'm a drummer and I was playing in a band up in Jamestown. And in 2002, there was the Overland Fire. And I didn't know a lot about fires at that point, but I knew that there was a potential that my bandmates, uh, studio and their homes were going to burn down. So I asked, uh, a fellow named Rob O'Donnell, who was a client of mine at Pro Peloton Bike Shop, which I guess we can get to in a minute. I own a bike shop, um, how to volunteer. And so he told me, you have to go get your EMT. It takes about, you know, it's one semester. And I did that because I wanted to help. I wanted to do something and I figured, I mean, I get my EMT. I know how to dig line. I can do grunt work. So I went and I got it. And this was my first political awakening. When I got it, I saw, uh, him at the reservoir. We were running. And I said, Rob, I got my EMT. I'm super excited. I'm going to volunteer for a sunshine fire. And the reason why I said sunshine fire is because I lived in Seven Hills, which is two miles up Sunshine Canyon from Fourth Street. Um, and he said, no, you're going to volunteer for Boulder Rural Fire Rescue. I said, no, 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 no. I want to volunteer for my district, for my department. And he said, we are your department. And I said, wait a second, you passed two city stations to come to my house? And he goes, yeah, that's right. So that raised a big red flag in my head. And the first thing I did was email Sheriff Pelly, who is the sheriff, the county sheriff at the time. And I asked him, why, why would this, these logistics be in place for this? And he assured me that, um, well, he acknowledged it was a problem. And he assured me that in five years, all this would be consolidated and taken care of. That would have been in, uh, 2009. We've gotten closer and we've got, um, response plans where even if it's not in our district, um, a closer unit will respond. And I was involved in making some of those plans between Boulder Rural and Boulder Fire, which is the city, so that if there's a critical call up there, City Station One, which is minutes away, would respond versus us at, uh, 63rd and Lookout, which could be 20 minutes away.
Yeah. So that you saw that there was like a, a gap in the system here that needed to be fixed for the safety of the community.
And I'm coming in green as green can be. And like, it's just common sense.
Wow. Okay. And that you called that your first political awakening?
For Boulder. Yeah. Yeah.
What are, what are things about Boulder right now that people could be awakened about from your perspective, especially going for city council position?
I mean, I'll start with fire since I know fire. Yeah. I mean, it's huge. On, on the city council itself, um, there are a lot of, um, they're all talented people and they all have their, um, expertise, their subject matter experts in certain purviews, but not fire. So that was one of the things that, um, really kind of pushed me into this run. I mean, I was approached to run, but when I saw that, I was hesitant. And I saw that and I'm like, I do have a lot of value to add because I've seen some of the questions that they ask. And rather than always asking staff, it's nice to be able to consult within council when you've got somebody who knows architecture or planning or whatever it may be. So I saw that and what people need to wake up to, to answer your question specifically, um, it's not just the city of Boulder. It's the county. It's everything to the west of us that needs to be coordinated. So there have been organizations that have been doing what are called fuel breaks. And then there are shaded fuel breaks, which you're not stripping out all the trees. You're just taking the underbrush. So for example, um, Bald Mountain, which is about four and a half miles up Sunshine Canyon, little loop there. Early 2000s, they were going to do a big mitigation project there. And the people that lived up there were very, very reticent to have any trees cut down because it's nature. It's beautiful. We love it the way it is. And, you know, the county was showing them pictures of what it looked like in the late 1800s, early 1900s. Or, um, yeah, you get my point. Um, and it was much less dense. It was like four ponderosa per acre. And now it's like 40 ponderosa per acre. But on top of that, what happens that I don't think a lot of people realize is you get all these smaller pines. They're called lodgepole pines that start growing in between. And then when that never burns, because we're constantly protecting it, because we build flammable homes in the middle of it and we paint them with flammable liquid and hope for the best. What happens is you've got this understory that's highly flammable that'll carry fire. So it can be grasses. It can be brush. Then it gets into the lodgepoles. That carries up and then gets into the pines. And then you can have, if it's windy, which it usually is, um, on these big fire events, you can get a crown fire, which means it's going across the top of the trees. So mitigation is huge, like clearing out that understory. And you can do that a lot of ways. You can do it manually. You can also do it if, you know, appropriate, based on weather conditions. You can do it with prescribed fire too.
Okay.
Which is probably the healthiest because that's what the forests are actually used to.
So the main, because I've heard this a lot about the Southern California fires as well as people just questioning like, why don't they do this mitigation more? And you're saying it's strictly because the opposition of the homeowners?
No, I think they're, well, that's one. Um, people get comfortable with their surroundings and you have a house and you're up the canyon. You've got all these beautiful trees and you're watching, you know, the Albertson black squirrels and all these birds migrate through. And you don't want to touch it, but that's not what it used to be like. Like if you even look at pictures of Boulder from like 1890, there aren't any trees here. There are trees along the riparian, you know, way, the streams, but not much else.
So without like man's manipulation and our antics of trying to keep this place the way it is, you're saying we would, Boulder would be cycling through like bigger fires?
That's right.
More often and it wouldn't have really bad an eye if people weren't living here.
Yeah.
Because we all have our residence here. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Sticky situation.
And we have insurance and we want to protect it. And, but the way we were protecting it, we just didn't see the whole picture. I mean, the Native Americans used fire all the time for, you know, crops and just nurturing the soil. But, you know, you build a house and you just want everything to stay the same. Once you're in there. But you have to be a steward of the forest, a steward of the land and really know where is your house? What is this ecosystem? And by preventing fire, we've actually been really poor stewards of the land selfishly to protect our homes. So it's going to be an educational process and it's probably going to be, um, unfortunately helped by the Palisades Fire and the Marshall Fire that we've had here because we have very recent direct examples to point to.
I remember seeing this picture. It was like a meme and it was a, a deer crossing the road. And the, I think it was the meme, the idea of the meme was that the deer is not crossing the road. The road is crossing the forest. And I kind of see how this is like symbolic to what you're, the picture you're painting here of us intervening on Boulder's natural cycles.
Yeah.
And how to do it properly.
Yeah. And I get it. I mean, when we talk about like the deer versus the road, like I moved from Sunshine Canyon down to the city of Boulder. I'm over on, um, Fourth Street. And I moved down because, um, my wife and I at the time had a child. Everything up there was, um, like a yucca. It would poke them if he fell or the animals would eat them if they caught them. We had mountain lions like literally sleeping in front of our door. So we moved down here and, um, less than a year later, literally on my birthday, um, my, uh, wife at the time, Lisa, was taking out the wrapping paper for, um, the holidays that we were going to do for Nico, who was three. And, uh, this little Jack Russell came out with her to the alley. She put all the recycling stuff in the bins, called Stella. Stella didn't come. And so she called me. I was at the fire station and she said, um, Stella didn't come back when I called her. Do you think it's okay if I just drive around the block while Nico's sleeping? And I said, yeah, he'll be fine. Um, so she did. And I'm on the phone with her and she says, I don't, I don't see her, but oh my God, I see a mountain lion. I'm like, cool. And she had a Subaru Outback and she said, it's longer than the front of my car and it's higher than the, the hood. And I'm like, that's so cool. We've always wanted to see one. And she goes, oh, it's got something in its mouth. And I said, oh, probably a rabbit or a fox. And she goes, oh God, I hope it's not Stella. And then I heard here just screaming, it is Stella. And, you know, I'm firefighter. I'm cool and collected. I know how to deal with that. I'm like, run the fucking thing over. So, I mean, the whole point of the story is that I understand how people live here, but they don't expect what's always been here, whether it's a mountain lion or fire. Like you're living in nature and you're living in the, you know, wildland urban interface. It is an interface.
Powerful way to put it. Did I see a story just recently that a mountain lion was, what was this story?
Yeah. Um, somebody was walking their small dog on a leash and I guess they did a, I don't know exactly what time it was, but it was evening. And they were doing their regular walk and a mountain lion came out of the, the brush and took the dog. And, I mean.
And then they, and then someone found the mountain or who, who takes care of that?
Yeah, that's Department of Wildlife.
And then they relocated the mountain lion?
Yep. They found it. They tranquilized it. They tagged it so that they can monitor it. And then they relocate it to places unknown to us.
Where was it? Do you know where that happened in Boulder this time?
I think it was, um, like around Panorama, uh, between 19th, um, up on that.
Yeah, that's a beautiful neighborhood.
Neighborhood right there. Yeah. Yeah.
All right. So my daughter is about to go into third grade. How do you, can you describe, because I'm about at the third grade level of, um, certain politics. Can you describe the city council, like what it does, what it's comprised of, how it's set up?
Yeah, yeah. Um, there are nine members. There's a mayor. There's a mayor pro tem in case the mayor's out. And they're in charge of the budget and they're in charge of city policy. So what happens is, um, you'll have staff, which could be from planning, transportation, housing. And they put together, um, you know, the policies that they want and the, um, funding that they want as well. And then they bring it to the city council for review. The city council reviews it and they vote on it. Sometimes there are more than one votes. Sometimes they need several readings. Um, if there's an amendment, you need another reading. But, um, yeah, they are the ones that, um, all of our city departments go to. And then city council, um, reviews it, discusses it, amends it, approves it, or denies it.
And, um, that's good to know. That's very educational for me. Um, are there, like, so there's the mayor and the mayor?
Mayor pro tem.
Mayor pro tem. And then there are seven more?
Yeah.
And then are those seven representing different categories or?
No, it's not like, um, jurisdictional or like an alderman or precincts. No.
And then where do, um, so the staff that you were talking about, because it was something I'm curious about, especially having two dogs and my eight-year-old daughter and living in a bit of a food forest, like right now, a lot of the streets, especially in the West Boulder are full of food. And then a lot of like, it's like every other neighbor has like a tag up that pesticides are applied here. Who's, where's that?
As far as like regulation goes.
Into the city council.
That's a great question.
I like voice an opinion on that.
You can come to, um, any meeting and there's, um, an open forum where you can speak and you can address your concerns. There's also a hotline, um, that's on their website where you can speak directly via email to city council members. Yeah, there are several ways to bring it up, but, um, the short answer is I don't know why or why not, pesticides are regulated or not regulated. I know that they're doing things, for example, like electric blowers, electric mowers. The city has to use those now, but you'll see landscape companies all day long, um, come into the neighborhoods with gas blowers. So I don't know if it's a long lines of that, like the city will never use a toxic pesticide. But, you know.
I'm imagining the flags there and maybe they're making it mandatory if you, or you're supposed to, if you apply pesticides.
Yeah, for pets and kids. Yeah. Yeah.
But it's weird because you have like a beautiful blueberry bush and then you have like on the next door pesticides are applied.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then especially for, I, especially for pets that are rolling all up in that.
A hundred percent. Yeah. Yeah. And the, you know, there's, there's a whole group that certify certain gardens as pollinators, you know, to keep the bee community moving around. I'm sure those yards are probably very conscious of that. And, you know, grass in general, grass is probably what takes the most water, pesticides, fertilizers, just to have this lawn.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you right now, I'm guilty of it. I have a lawn. I'm looking to replace it. But, you know, for the community, it's, it's a lot of money to do landscaping unless you're going to do it yourself.
Is there, um, because I have a preloaded like top 10 Breaking Normal questions. I'm going to throw on you and see if we can like do quick answers, but is there anything you want to make sure we talk about? And where's the best place for people to follow you slash support you?
Yeah, thank you. Um, you can always email me at rob@robfor, the number four, Boulder. You can catch me there.
Rob for Boulder?
Rob for Boulder. And you can also find the website there.
Okay.
And my contact information is on there.
Okay.
So you can literally call me. My personal cell phone number's on there. Um, my email is on there. And, uh, you can also donate, endorse, ask for a yard sign. It's all on the website.
What would you encourage? Like if someone was like, well, what would I call them for?
Any community concern. Like I've already had people, um, not call me yet, but I've had probably a dozen emails already. And it could be about housing density. It could be about potholes. It could be about, I've had a lot about fire. I've had a lot about downtown economic vitality, the 30% vacancy rate for office buildings. How do we tackle that? And then the small business owners, you know, I've had people contact me and say like, I can't afford my business anymore because every time the landlord has an increases in taxes, insurance, or there's something that needs to be done on the property, it's called a triple net rent lease. It's called a triple net rent lease. It gets passed down to them. So they get their base rent and they get something on top of it. So those are the kind of concerns that I get. And I don't have answers for all these questions, but I have ideas how to get momentum to move forward and have conversations with the people that need to be included in it.
Well, I sort of believe questions are the answers, hence why I do this podcast.
You're right. Yeah.
I don't know. It's more the question, what it brings up.
It's interesting you say that because I'm at the point right now where from December until today, basically, I have been meeting with so many, so many people and like for hours at a time and asking questions and information and sharing my perspective on it. But mostly bringing in information and now I have to pivot and I have to give the information and give my point of view. Yeah.
Squeeze that full sponge.
Yeah. And I have to squeeze it off and down into 90 seconds for these forums and things. And I'm much more than.
Away at the end here.
Great. That's my, that's my Achilles heel, but I'll do my best.
Before I begin those, do you have anything else you want to make sure? Because we will have more time afterwards. I just want to make sure there was nothing on your heart that you came in to talk about that I haven't brought up.
No, let's roll with it.
All right, let's roll with it. How are we doing on time here, guys? Oh, 31. All right, cool. Awesome. Awesome. Here we go. What's been the most unexpected lesson you learned as a fire captain? That now guides your leadership vision for Boulder?
As a fire captain or as a firefighter in general?
General, general.
Okay. It's the story that I told you in the very beginning, when I found out that these departments were so siloed and it didn't take into consideration literally our number one priority, which is life safety. So we're life safety, preservation of property, number two. And when I found out that Boulder Rural Fire takes a 20-minute drive past two city stations, that was my biggest wake-up call. And because of that, I was involved in creating response plans between Boulder Rural and the city on that level. And then I was also part of the consortium, the Boulder County Consortium. And that's more out east. That's Mountain View, City Boulder, Boulder Rural, Lafayette, Louisville.
Awesome. Awesome. That was probably like 90 seconds. So this is kind of a two-part question and you may have mentioned this earlier. You founded a bike shop in 1999? Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. How has that shaped your understanding of community and business in the city?
It was actually 97. But the way, like one of my first experiences with that is we wanted to put up our sign outside. And it was, the bike shop was on 13th Street. It was on the backside of like Mo's Bagels Breadworks area. So I went to the city with a design and of course they shot everything down. It was too long, it was too wide and it had lights and the colors weren't muted enough. So it was probably six months of going back and forth with this design and the person that was making the design for me. I got the colors right. I got the size right. Got rid of the lighting. And I'm not kidding when about six months later that changed and all my neighbors had lights on their signs. And I was like so frustrated that it took so long and the result was subpar, you know, it definitely didn't behoove me as a business owner. So what I, what I see and what I would love to tackle and get some folks on this page is to go through, you know, our title nine, which is codes and ordinances, and they're going to do that with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. And just go through there with a simple AI tool that looks for conflicts, redundancies and antiquated policies. And then obviously have a human eye on it. San Francisco did this. Fire departments have done that for their SOGs and SOPs, which are standard operating guidelines and procedures. And it's tens, hundreds of millions of words, you know, in minutes. And then that just helps you get a group together to then get human eyeballs on them and make the changes.
Awesome. That sounds like a obvious idea.
Sounds like it. I would think so.
Do you know what AI they would use to do that? Is there like a specialty?
I don't know the name, but there is a specialty that San Francisco used.
That's cool. When is Boulder most at its risk for wildfires? And yeah, and what can we do? What can we do at these times?
The biggest risk is when there's not snow on the ground and it's not raining. Pretty much everything else, it doesn't matter what time of year it is. Our biggest fires have been in November, December. Marshall Fire was put out by snow eventually. And so was the very first fire that I spoke of, the Overland Fire that was around Thanksgiving, put out by snow. So when you have a red flag day, you've got high winds, you've got low humidity and you've got high temperatures. And all the fuels have dried out. Like one thing you can do is you can go take a walk in the woods and just snap off a little piece of a pine and just see if it's pliable or if it just snaps. If it snaps, you know, we're ripe for fire and those trees don't have a lot of moisture in them. Those are called thousand hour fuels. And the grasses, which are one-hour fuels, are super flashy. So flashy meaning they'll catch quickly and they'll spread. And so when you've got that combination with wind, that's a red flag day and that's when we're most vulnerable to that.
And okay, yeah, like I'm just thinking about what is the common person to do? Just like be more aware?
No, no, there's a lot the common person can do. You know, first and foremost, know if you do get evacuated, what you're going to bring. So you're not hesitating because one of the things that I found in my career is we would go into neighborhoods and there would still be people in these homes with fire like minutes away. And some of them just refused to evacuate. But some of them just don't know or they're still gathering things. So the more efficient you can be, that's huge. The other thing you can do is you can download on your phone this app called Boko Alerts. So that when there is an evacuation and it could be for flooding, it could be for, you know, amber alerts, all kinds of things, but you'll get alerted and you'll know right away. Instead of following, you know, social media, which is, you know, you have to do purposefully.
That's some good advice and I thank you for that. Housing affordability is a crisis. What's the most human story that made this issue personal for you?
Gary, Indiana, when I bought that home and that little girl came up to me and said, are you buying my daddy's home? That was an economic issue. Which was huge and he was going to get displaced out of his community and I don't know where he would have gone. And I really tried to keep that community intact. It's what I grew up with and there's a lot of value to every single social economic class in any community. There's always some little gem that they bring. Here, we're really struggling with that. We are a city that's surrounded by a big, beautiful donut of green that you can't build in. We've got a five-story limit as far as height for buildings. So we don't have a lot of housing density here. The crisis is the lack of the middle-class housing. That's one. I mean, affordable housing is a crisis. That's been tackled pretty efficiently and is still being tackled by Boulder Housing Authority. We are definitely struggling with middle-class housing because the dirt is so expensive to build on, just the raw land. Some of the ideas around that. There's this place called Area Three. And it's on the way out of town. If you take 28th, where 28th and Broadway start to meet to the east. It's owned by, it's county, it's owned by residents and parks and recreation. So that land is available for middle-class housing. Some of the statistics I hear is that it would be 700 to 700 million to a billion dollars just for infrastructure. But what I am really trying to square, having done real estate is once you build it, let's say we get the land, let's say we do a land lease to keep it, keep it affordable. Then you're probably going to be in a situation where the equity isn't building like my parents who are baby boomers. The majority of their wealth was probably from the single-family home that they lived in. And that's hard to do today. So like one of the things that I thought, like within the housing program that I would love to add is financial education on some of the options where you can put the money that you've saved. And don't put it in a bank account that's earning interest under the inflation rate. Like let's, let's give some tools and understand, you know, market cycles and you know, time in the market always beats timing the market. So you don't get these people thinking, I'm going to be a day trader now.
That's a good idea too. I like it. And you may have mentioned this, and I think I, what I looked into, you've earned, you've earned endorsements from prominent leaders. What personal quality do they see in you that others might not yet?
I think what they see is, I mean, listening is leading. Like you really have to like be an active listener and really care. And that's what I've had to do in the fire service. I mean, that's what I've done my whole life. It's my, it's my life, it's my career, it's how I just conduct myself. But I listen. I do not, like if somebody comes to me and says, okay, I want you to talk to this person, but let me tell you about them. I don't want, don't tell me about them. Like let me make my own judgment. Like I'll do my own research. I'll see what their background is so that I know I'm talking to somebody in housing or climate or, you know, business. And then I'll just go from there. I don't need the personal, you know, drama, if you will, around it. So I think what people see in me is that I, I can build bridges and being in the fire service, there are very strong personalities. Very. And I've had to navigate those and I'm able to build bridges and find common ground.
I have a lot of respect for that and it reminds me of this idea I've been sitting on for a while. I've been studying bees here and there and there's a type of bee called the scout bee. It's like I made three to five percent of the hive and they are the ones that go to look for a new home.
Right.
Whenever is necessary. And when they come back, they express what they found through what like scientists would call a waggle dance. But no other bee will dance that same waggle dance unless they go check it out for themselves first.
Interesting.
And then when they do, and then like the finally, like a unanimous decision is made. Everybody's only people, only bees that literally saw with their own senses, what they were reporting, that's when the decision is made. And I figured you would love that. Something about when you said that, no, don't tell me about them. Just.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me go get my eyes on it. Yeah. That is very honeybee-like. You have your cat bees?
I have not. No.
I see that in my future. Tell me about a time your leader, about a time your leadership failed the community. What happened and what did you learn?
My leadership failed the community. I would like to say never, but I'm sure that's not true. The example that I can think of is when Boulder Rural was going for a mill levy increase, I believe this was in 2015. We addressed the community. We went out, we knocked on doors and one of the things that we did, one of the firefighters there, his wife was a Realtor. And this was before it was, it's 2015. So it wasn't super easy to find MLS, the multiple listing service for real estate, just on the web. So what I asked them to do is I said, can we get the list, you know, leading up to this mill levy ask campaign? And every single person that moves into our fire district, I want to go there. And I want to put a little basket on their door, welcome to the neighborhood, here are the resources, this is who we are. And just welcome to the neighborhood kind of thing. And we did that for a little bit. And then we went out and we got our mill levy and we were successful. And then I tried to keep that going and I didn't try hard enough. We get a lot of things thrown on our plate and I let that die. It was one of those battles that I just, I, it was just one extra straw on that camel's back.
Thanks for exploring that one. If Boulder had a theme song, what would it be and why?
Shoot, these are tough questions. They're getting harder. I don't know. I'll go with you too. It's a beautiful day. It's just always, this is an amazing place. Every time I go on a vacation, every time I get wanderlust and explore someplace else, I come back here. And I'm just like this, you cannot beat this. It's amazing. Stunning.
I must say that I've traveled a lot and it seems like a lot of the people that have traveled as much as me or more, Boulder seems to be the home base they want.
Agreed. I hear the same thing.
Home base for world travelers in a way. All right, here's a few like popcorns in the one. Coffee or tea?
Coffee.
Mountains or plains?
Mountains.
Meaningful conversations or podcasts?
In this moment, podcasts, which is a meaningful conversation.
Yeah, that was a funny one. All right, here we go. Last one that I have for now, from the preloaded ones. Five years from now, what story do you hope best sums up your legacy as a Boulder leader?
First and foremost, that I listen to the community. I listen to the staff. I listen to my council members and I've made positive changes. I've created less friction for businesses, for homeowners to get things done, whether it's redoing their home, building something, business vitality downtown, creating less monetary friction for them to get things done. I would love to have the legacy of he finally figured out something for the unhoused. I don't know how. I mean, I've gone back to 2017 and watched some of these forums and listened to candidates speak. And I'm not saying things haven't changed, but at the same time, things haven't changed. And if I could just have one little bit of movement, moving that needle to help that, the situation that, and it's not just us and it's not just the county and it's not just the state. This is a national, international situation that's happening. So if I could move that needle, I, I'd die with a smile on my face.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. I do, because I do believe you are a great listener. And I do believe that's what leaders do. Do you have any tips on or tricks on how to become a better listener?
Everybody's got something to learn from somebody. I look at it as an opportunity. Like I'm always wanting to grow, right? And like, whether it's your mind or your body, move it or lose it, or it applies with your brain too. So like there's this opportunity to listen to somebody and you know, the cliche like prepping your answer is not listening. Like there's, there's always wisdom out there. And I think, you know, maybe it's because I was so much younger than my brother and sister and I grew up around older people and I realized that value of like that wisdom and those little kernels where I'm like, oh my God, that's, that makes sense. That's amazing. Or I never thought of that. Yeah, just look at it as an opportunity to enrich your life just by listening.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Yeah, you're really good at it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Sat across, I guess, about 200 plus people doing this. I'm like, you're maybe one of the best listeners is my guess. Well, damn, gonna be judgmental.
Thank you. Please be.
Oh, do you have any questions for me?
Maybe that's not pertinent to podcasts, but I am curious how you got into this.
Yeah. So I used to host health retreats for about a decade. And then I was, I published a book called Breaking Normal.
Okay.
And then I was staying with my friend JP Sears who wrote the foreword to my book.
I know JP Sears.
That's, that's cool. He's. That's, that's cool. He's funny.
He's hilarious.
He has actually had a satire video about Boulder. Have you seen?
I have. I've seen about crypto and all of them. I love them.
He was the first guest on the show and he wrote the foreword to my book and um I think we were staying at his house and he was starting to think about podcasting and he got all this podcast equipment. And then just like something like just struck me. It was um, maybe it was like December and I was like, I'm gonna do twelve episodes a day, launch the Breaking Normal podcast and I'm gonna get on the New and Noteworthy. That was like my aim. And that's how, that's what I did. I used this podcast equipment and I determined I wanted to do them in person. I want to do them in person. I want to have a creative constraint of time. And I don't want to have like an agenda of what we're going to talk about. And just like, and the guest would be based on synchronicity. So I kind of created this like game for me. Show that would make it, make sure it would stay fun and fulfilling. And now here we are about wow, about seven years later and two hundred something episodes later, I think. Maybe a little less than seven, maybe more like five, yeah.
You just tapped this into the quantum and made it happen.
Well, it sounds like that's something that you might know about.
I mean, barely, but I know it's like beyond everybody's comprehension, but still powerful and Einsteins were spooky. But it's real.
I haven't heard that word in a while. I like it. I love Halloween here in Boulder. I think that's my favorite time of the year. It's like mid October. Like when like, like sometimes there's snow and there's like every color of leaf and like the grass is green and the sun's out. I'm like, whoa.
And it's not a hundred degrees.
Yeah, exactly. And the wa- and the creek is relatively still warm from the summer. I love Boulder.
I do too. I have one more question for you.
Oh, please do.
Like what is one of your biggest concerns or hopes for Boulder?
Um, all right, so I had a doctor, I had a cardiologist on yesterday that he he's known sometimes to be the conspiracy cardiologist. And I think we share some similar frustrations, but um mine would be that like there would not be unnecessary toxins sprayed into our air and our soil and our grass and our water and to the wildlife. It's unnecessary in my opinion. I'm sure there's a reason. I'm sure there's like some sort of dogma and capitalism mixed together. It's causing it.
Mostly economics.
But it's crazy. And you know, especially with, I have had so many health professionals on the show lately and my parents, my my dad's been a pharmacist for over forty five years and my mom's been a nurse for over forty years. I was pretty mad and I took the MCATs and I don't know, it's like there, is there, can't, do people wonder if there's a connection with all these unnecessary toxins um being sprayed all over our communities and certain health conditions that seem to be rising in certain communities? Probably like what you saw firsthand in a terrible way in Gary. With the stardust every morning. I mean, I think, I think Boulders are relatively, like I I'm happy, I guess I'm, it's a nice compromise that you're putting signs up when there's pesticides, but why put them on, why, why put them on there?
But to your question, do people care? I think people are just so busy with their lives that they have a very narrow window of things that they care about. Like if you've got kids, you care about their safety, their health, their education, making them into, you know, giving them the tools to become good people and you're kind of like narrow like that and I think when you get a little bit, I think when you're younger or older, there's this middle time when you're just focused on a family from my experience and other people's experience where um some people are very good at like tackling these issues. But when you're very young, well, not very young, but like voting age eighteen twenties, like you see this. And you're bringing it up. And then when you're older and retired and then you get time to really look at this and see it, because I will say, having been here for thirty three years, owned a bike shop, raised a child who's going to see you, been in the fire service here for eighteen years. When it came to politics and all of the myriad of issues, I had just scratched the surface. So yes, do people care? I think they care if they know.
Yeah, and I I think this is one of the ways I'm potentially answering these questions is like asking you. It's an honor to be able to sit here and ask you that. And you know, the cardiologist I was talking to, he lives out in nature because he uh what's coming from the plains, he believes like we're all getting.
Oh, the contrails.
Yes, he's trying to, he's trying to like escape mold, contrails, the matrix, all of it. And I feel like I am, out of all places I've ever lived, I truly am part of this community and I do care. And I do want to do what I can, especially as best not only for my immediate family. And I know people really care about dogs. So when it comes back to the pesticide things, there might be an angle there because it's amazing how many dogs have issues, like health issues.
You're right, actually.
Amazing. And it's also amazing how many dogs um roll and pesticide laid in grass.
Yeah, because the dog can't read.
Yeah, well, make uh, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate the time.
Website one more time?
Uh, robforboulder, number four dot com.
Awesome. Awesome, Rob. Thank you. Thank your team and I'm remembering a great future here for Boulder with you.
Awesome. Thank you. I really appreciate it, Daniel.
Yeah, keep breaking normal, y'all.